And we're live.
Thank you. Thank you all for joining us tonight. I'll call to order the February 8th, 2021 workshop for the Arvada City Council. And call upon Kristen Rush for roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Proton Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Very good. Mr. Devon, I see that we've got two workshops for us this evening. So you want to get us started?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have a council update on the annual streets maintenance program and travel, traffic signal and replacement program. And I believe we're going to have Director of Public Works, Don Wick, start us off.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Tonight, we are going to give you an annual update on the streets maintenance program as well as the work that we have been doing in traffic engineering. And I'd like to take just a second to introduce the team who is going to be here tonight to give the presentation. From the streets division, we have Dan Humphrey, who is the streets manager. We also have Keith Bowen, who is the pavement manager, and we have James Greer, who is the pavement coordinator. And you'll be seeing all three of them here shortly. In addition to that, we have our new traffic engineer, Mazidir Hussein, who will be giving the presentation with two of his colleagues, Sylvia Lopo, who is one of our traffic engineers, and Phil Neal, who manages our signs, stripes, and markings team. So with that, Dan, I will turn it over to you to begin the presentation. Dan, are you there? Dan or Keith or either of you present?
Can you hear me, Don?
Yes, go ahead.
Having a little trouble here. Okay. Thank you for that introduction. We're pleased to present to council this evening some of our successes this past year with our pavement management program, as well as wanting to share some other information that we're implementing and some things that's going to be happening in the future. Next, please. What happened? Next slide, please. Okay, so the overview for our presentation is going to include 2020 accomplishments, some new pavement management tools, and 2021 street infrastructure maintenance plan. And from here, I'd like to introduce you to Keith Bohan, the pavement manager, and he'll share some of the next information. Oh, excuse me. James, James will be sharing the first half, excuse me.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm James Smith. I'm the pavement management coordinator here in the streets department, and just like to share some of our 2020 accomplishments. We could go to the next slide, please. Here is a street of, or a map of all the streets that we repaved or reconstructed over the last year. Some of the accomplishments that I'd like to point out here are that we had a really good working relationship with our contractor and working closely with them. We were able to make some cost-saving changes throughout during construction that helped us expand our program throughout the year. For example, on Westwood Circle, when we started construction there, we found that the street, the street only had three inches of asphalt. And we were able to change the removals and then add some additional asphalt. Slide there. And therefore, we got a better product out of that and a stronger street. Additionally, in the Candlelight and the Alta Vista neighborhoods, we originally had those scheduled for reconstruction. But after construction started, we found that the condition was, was pretty well. So we were able to change those to traditional two-inch mill and overlay. And then by by saving the cost or by having the cost savings from there, we were able to expand the program where we expanded the paving on Eightieth Avenue as well as Eightieth, I'm sorry, Eighty Second and then Eightieth Avenue. And then we also implemented a new asphalt mix called SMA, which is a stronger rut-resistant asphalt. And we were able to put that on Fifty Second and a portion of Eightieth. Where rutting is more prevalent there. So with that, we can go to the next slide. So overall, we got about 50 lane miles of street resurfaced. And you can see that the bulk of that was on arterial collector streets where the bulk of traffic is. So it's a pretty, pretty good accomplishment there. So we go to the next slide. Additionally, we do, we strive to do our concrete repairs two years ahead of asphalt repaving. We have a two-year warranty on the concrete. So we like to get the concrete done and make sure that it's holding up before we repave the street. So here, hopefully you can see the map okay, but this was our program from 2020 where we've got quite a few streets completed for concrete repairs. Then we'll go to the next slide. Overall, we got about 40 miles of sidewalk and curb and gutter that were inspected. And then we did about 336 ADA ramp upgrades. And then we did 18 miles of sidewalk curbing gutter repairs or replaced. So that kind of wraps up our program, successful program for 2020. And I'll hand it over to Keith. He can talk about our next steps.
Can we go to the next slide? So this map is one that the council is familiar with. It's just from our old pavement management software. I just wanted to put that up so we can kind of look at where we came from last year with our program, the software that we use for our pavement management. Can you go to the next slide? So the new program that we went out and looked for about a year ago, and we're still in implementation on, is called Road Matrix. It's a product from Stan Tech. And the first point there is it, we look at it for the surface distress information. That's the same information that we use for our PCI. With this new software, we also have, we're going to collect information on roughness and rutting of our streets. We're going to do a falling weight deflectometer, ground penetrating radar, and we're also going to do coring for subsurface investigation. Next slide. So the first part of that is the surface distresses. I'm sure you're familiar before previous slides with the van that goes around and it collects, looks at the surface of the street and collects the information, cracks, patches, potholes, and then it quantifies those for the severity and the extent, and that's what gives us our PCI. So with this information, that's, that's what we used previously in our previous software. And it was just that, just the surface of the asphalt. Next slide. So now we're going to go into also putting into that mix is our roughness. So off of our roughness, the reason why that's important in the rutting, that's really what people notice first when they're driving down the street is if it's bumpy, if it, if it doesn't ride nice, it brings their attention to, to the street. So we want to put those in there as well into the mix. So we're taking care of some of those streets that maybe on the surface are still in good condition, but they have a very poor ride quality to them. Next slide. This is the falling weight deflectometer. So this is our structural integrity of the road. And why this is important to put into the mix is because we have a lot of roads that were designed a long time ago. And the use that they have now is very different than the use that they were designed for. So that road that may be falling apart and showing distress and cracking, maybe there's more to it than just replacing the asphalt. We don't want to throw good, we don't want to throw money away on a street that really needs more attention than just new asphalt. So with this information, we're going to be able to go out and dive down deeper into that street. And the way this operates is it drops a weight on the road, and then there's sonographs that are scientifically spaced out that are going to take that information back to really give you a good understanding of not only what's under the road, but the integrity of what's there. So that's, that's where we're going to get this information. And it's important also to notice that this information, once it's collected, unless you make structural changes to the road, you will not have to collect this again in the future. So it's a one-time deal unless we rebuild a road and need that information in the future. Next slide. So this is our ground penetrating radar. We had this information collected. And in conjunction with this, we also do the coring at the same time. The ground penetrating radar lets us know the pavement thickness, the what's underneath the pavement, how much subgrade we have, the gravel underneath the road. It's really going to give us a good indication of what we're getting into. The old methods were to take up the asphalt and do our own investigation. With this, we don't need to do that. So with our software, we're really looking to move forward and gather more information, make better, better decisions, database decisions. This is going to allow us to be really data-driven in, in our decisions on what we do out in the street. And it's a big part of what we do with the software. Next slide. So this new software also integrates with two main softwares that we currently use in the city. City Works is important because that's, that's where we do all of our work order tracking. So anything that's done out in the street by a city employee, they put into the work order system and it tracks it as an asset in that work order system. With this new software, it talks back and forth. So whenever we make a decision on a road, we're looking more holistically at what was done on that street by our own internal crews, anybody that, that we have that information on. And then when we put something into the software, it's, it's keeping track of it. And that's important because we need to keep good history on all the work performed on our streets because it tells a story of where, where that road has been and why we need to reconstruct it or repave it. And why it needs a rehabilitation. The other one that, that is interesting on here is the ArcGIS. So that's, that's where we do all of our city mapping is through that program. And the reason why that is important is, go to the next slide, please. So that ties into this decision tree. Anything that can be mapped can be put into this decision tree. So we create, as a city, we create these decision trees. We can create them, one for the whole city. We can create one for arterials, one for collectors, one for locals. We can drill down and create one for each individual road segment if we wanted to. And, and why those maps tie into this is because we can put in future drawings for water main replacements. And then have, have this tell us where those plans are, or we can set a decision on here if the water main is over 40 years old, that it doesn't get put into this as a, as a reconstruct. Maybe it's a lesser treatment, less expensive, because we'll know that those are going to be streets that we're going to have to dig up in the future in short time. So this, this is a huge advantage to us with these programs with this decision tree. And like I said, anything we can put on a map, we can feed into this to make a decision out of it. So we're not relying on somebody that remembers where those water main and multiple maps and trying to go through anymore. The program is going to do that for us. Next slide. So this is the degradation curves. The one on the right is one that has been presented to council many times before, and it's a very generic lifespan of the road. And it's not any specific road. It's one they use for every road. And nobody knows the way the, the road is constructed. It's just very generic and it's telling you, if you were to, you know, spend $1 here, it's equated to this many dollars this much later in life. And it's a good basic, but what our new program is going to do with all that data that we collected, it's going to give us the actual degradation curve of that street. So it's going to predict those out based on more than just what it sees on a surface because we're collecting all that subsurface information. We're collecting more, more information. We're going to have more rep, actual representation of the lifespan of that road. And as we do different treatments, that's what's going to drag those out farther than what's predicted. But we're going to put that information into the program and have it captured. So they're going to adjust as we do more work. Next slide. So here we're talking about our approach. The first approach, worst first, spends more money on the streets that are in worse condition. More money because they need to be reconstructed, which is a lot more costlier than maintaining a road. So our approach is keeping good roads good. What that means is we're going to maintain the roads that are already in current good condition to prolong that condition in good condition, not let them fall into poor condition. So with the old method of reconstructing streets out there, we're spending a large portion of our budget on, on a small amount of streets. Why we do that, for every, every one lane mile that we reconstruct, we're letting two more lane miles fall into that poor condition. So we're never going to catch up. It's, it's going to be a never-ending reconstruct on every street, and we just don't have the funds to do that. So we want to spend money towards roads that are already in good condition and keep them in good condition and not let them fall into that poor condition. And that way, we can now, we can now spend money on the ones that are in the poor condition and bring them back up. But at the same time, keep maintaining them so they don't fall back in. Does that mean the roads that are in, in poor condition, we're not going to pay attention to them? Absolutely not. We're still going to maintain them, but we're going to use appropriate methods to make them still drivable, make them still. Then we're not going to be able to turn them into good road, to perfect street overnight. It's going to take time to do that, but in the meantime, we're going to keep our heads above water by not letting more streets fall into that bad condition. And these are some of the methods we use to do that. We're going to be doing the thin lift and hot chips, which is a method of a very thin layer of asphalt that goes over rather than a complete reconstruct. The chip seals, the slurry seals, the rejuvenators, and then just overall maintenance of them to keep them from falling into those poor conditions. Next slide. So here's some, some map of what's planned for 2021. You'll see in the red, that's the concrete. The purple is a neighborhood off of between Seventy Second and Wadsworth there that we're going to go into and repave that neighborhood. Sixty Sixth Avenue from Oberon to Oak, Miller Street from 66 to Ralston Road, and then Ralston Road down to 58 through the Allen Dale intersection. The portion of 58th Avenue that wasn't repaved over by Ward is now ready to be paved. And then you'll see some neighborhoods in green. Those are where we're going to try those different surface treatment methods. There's, there's pavement in there. We currently have our current street teams out doing patching in those areas. And why that's important to note is patching is, is actually one of the biggest expense of the program. It takes those poor-conditioned areas, but it's also the costiest thing we can do. So by trying to do that internal, it's going to save the program a lot of money on having our own internal people do that. Because it's, like I said, it's one of the costiest things we can do. So we're, we're trying those methods up there. And we're seeing that, we're thinking we're going to have good success with those. Next slide. So that brings us to questions. Is there any questions from council?
I have a question.
Mr. Pfeiffer's first, I think, and then.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor and Ms. Ford. Can you go back to that previous slide? So you showed that you're going to try new treatment, and I think that green area is Whisper Creek. How, how old is that area? So I'm trying to just judge from what you, what you shared of when the streets were constructed and what treatment you're trying to do. And then, you know, you're talking about how that's dollar spent, you know, prolongs the life. Get more details of using like that as a use case?
So that is Whisper Creek. That's the, the south side of Eighty Seventh Avenue. That's the oldest part of Whisper Creek. That was where they started in there. I'm not 100% positive on the date. Yeah, I think 12 to 15 years in there of age that we're looking at. And that, and that's, that's really the key is, you know, that, that pavement is not in poor condition just yet. So if we go in that area and put a little bit of money in there, the, the extension on the life that we're going to see on that pavement is where we're going to get the payoff. You know, if, if we don't do anything, we're looking at maybe another five years before it would need some, maybe a mill and overlay in there. Whereas if we go in and we do this treatment, we can expect maybe another 10 years. You know, not saying we're not going to have to do anything else in there. We may have to go in and do some practicing, which is normal maintenance. But we should get that lifespan out of it and prolong that out another five years. And that's without doing any other treatments in there.
Are you using all the tools you were talking about earlier around, you know, ground penetrating radar and all those tools to come up with that determination? Or is, how did, I didn't know if those tools were readily available for you for this year.
No, not yet. So we're still in the implementation stages of the new software. It hasn't been completed yet. So those decisions aren't based. These are decisions using the older tools and boots-on-the-ground experience to make those determinations on these areas. But it'll be a good reference once we look at areas similar to that with the new software that'll reinforce that we made the right decision in those areas.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ford.
Yes, I wanted to ask you, on the PCI, I remember several years ago, we had a condition that we wanted to see a certain percentage of our roads at a certain PCI. Are we still looking at our roads in that same manner?
Yes. So the, the new software, even though it's collecting more information, we're still going to be able to take out just a PCI, just the surface stress, distresses. So we'll be able to talk the same numbers. But with all of that information, we're actually going to be able to take out what's called a PQI, which is a pavement quality index. It's going to factor all of those into there. So we're going to be starting to talk into two numbers, which isn't just PCI. We're going to talk more holistically of the whole pavement in the PQI as well. So that's later to come, once we have this information, to share that with you because we can have a street that had a high PCI, which is only surface distresses and doesn't take ride quality or anything else into, into the mix and show you those two difference in numbers. But I think to answer your question, you know, the, the goal of the city was a PCI of a 70.
And in, in the review, it, it mentioned, and I think you mentioned it as well, or one of the other folks mentioned it about the fact that what we're finding is, is that some of our roads were not constructed for the, I'm assuming the traffic and the weight that we're seeing on those roads, is that, is that the issue with the roads?
So that, that's what's going to, this information is going to help us determine that. You know, obviously a street that was designed and built, say, 30 or 40 years ago, wasn't intended to carry the same traffic load that we're asking it to now. So it's going to help us better make those determinations where we don't want to just say, you know, the road's in bad condition. Let's, let's do some patching and let's take two inches of asphalt off and put two inches back on. It's going to look pretty for the short term, but in five years, it's going to start cracking again, and it's going to have those same issues unless we fix it from the bottom up and make it strong. So that, that's where we want to look at this other information and make better decisions on some of those roads.
I'm going to ask you a question that you may perceive as putting you on the spot. I hope not, but I, I would like to ask you. You know, we've had very long conversations on waste hauling in the city, and we've talked about the weight of waste hauling trucks affecting our streets. Do you have any idea how our current system affects our streets with the amount of trucks, truck traffic that we have on our streets?
No, I, I think to give you a broad answer, because every street's different, everyone has, you know, you can have three different trash haulers or six different trash haulers on the same street. But in a broader sense, yes, you know, heavier vehicles, trash trucks, especially because of the stopping, the going, stopping and moving, the turning in cul-de-sacs, you know, and them being typically overweight, there, there's a lot of damage caused by heavy vehicles on the street. So by the city going to single hauler and taking those off the street, we will see an advantage in our pavement on that.
Will we at some point be able to measure that change, do you think?
You know, it'd be very hard and difficult to put, put numbers to that. I think the telling story is we'll be able to see it, but to be able to measure it is where it's going to be hard. We'll see some of these newer streets in, in the Alta Vista neighborhood would be a good neighborhood because we just finished paving that this past year. So it won't have that long extent of heavy trucks on it like other neighborhoods will. So we'll be able to use that as a good measurement moving forward to, to see that.
And I just have one other question for you. In your opinion, I know this is your opinion now, but in your opinion, do you feel that our newer streets being built are holding up as well as our older streets? You know, one of the reasons why I ask that question is because out of observation, so for example, I, I do know, I realized that 86 Parkway has a lot of traffic and a lot of truck traffic on it, but it's a relatively new street, and so is Lydon road. And yet, there has been some degradation of those streets. So just overall, do you find that to be or not to be the case?
So, I mean, to answer your question, construction methods are always, I guess we'll say evolving. Sometimes it doesn't go in the way it was planned. One of the big arguments in the asphalt industry is they call it RAP. It's recycled asphalt product. And what they do is they take old asphalt, grind it up, and they mix it in with the new asphalt. It's very common in the industry, a lot of places across the country use it typically around 20%. And what it does, it's, it's a cost-saving and it recycles the old asphalt. By doing that, it's, it's not the same product we saw, say, 20 years ago before they started introducing RAP. It's not the same product. Years ago, the method was they would, they would dig up and put gravel down before. Now they do a lot of soil treatments and mixing underneath the road. So, you know, it's, it's something new. But I don't think it's, it's really benefited the industry per se. I think it comes down to different ideas that people have tried that may not always be the best. But yeah, I think you're right. I think in, in some aspects, there's some streets that, like I said, different industry standards have changed that may not be the, the best ideas.
Thank you for that.
Ms. Simpson, you're next.
Thank you so much. So can we go back to the last slide there, please? Thank you. So, and please do correct me if I'm reading the map wrong here, but I, because it's kind of small on our screen. But to me, that looks like Wadsworth Boulevard going up, and then the purple area, and then the two immediately sort of adjacent red areas, that's going to be just east of Wadsworth, probably around 68th and 64th.
Yes.
Okay, great. So yeah, I can read a map. That's awesome. So one, I'm really excited to see because I'm very familiar with this area, and I know it needs a lot of attention and love. So I'm really excited to see this. My question's actually pertaining My question's actually pertaining to the middle, the middle area, right there in between these two sections, the sixty sixth to sixty fourth area. Is that slated to be coming up after these two are done? Because this entire area was sort of built up around the same time. And I know for a fact that between sixty eighth and sixty fourth also experiences a good amount of infrastructure issue on the roads. So I I'm actually just asking, because I occasionally have constituents contact me about these roads. So I'd love to be able to have a sort of timeline answer for them if one exists.
Yeah. So, the the red, what you're talking about between sixty fourth and sixty six, that's for the concrete replacement. That's done two years previous to our asphalt treatments, because it lets us get our con- our concrete through our warranty period. So if there were a warranty issue, we're not digging up new street to be able to fix the under warranty. But to answer your question, yes, our plan from there is to kind of to spread north and and fill that area in with our program. You know, there, where you're speaking of, there are some areas there. We've done some research in there, and there, there is some areas that haven't seen any sort of treatment or rehabilitation, anything, in thirty plus years. So those are some of those areas that we want to be able to go and and take care of them. But at the same time, we also have to be cognizant not to let more streets fall into disrepair.
So, so just a kind of an estimate of the timeline, and I understand if if you would just prefer to follow up with me, because you'd rather go back and look at the plans or something. But are we looking at two years, four years, five years? What do you think the timeline is just for these sort of in-between areas and then moving north from there?
I, I think that that's probably a question I'd like to follow up with you on.
Absolutely.
You know, a- as we implement our new software and and these new things, I don't want to, I don't want to put a number out there to you and then have to retract that. So I'd rather follow up with you.
Not a problem, and thank you so much.
Very team smart to do it that way. Do we have any other questions from anybody? Okay, Mr. Devon, anything further you want on this issue?
The only thing I would like to add, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, is that this team that led by Dan Pumphrey, Keith, very strategically directed, very well by Don Wick. Last summer, we spent thirteen plus million dollars. We had some money that was not spent in twenty nineteen, and so in twenty, in twenty twenty, it was somewhere over thirteen million dollars that was spent on asphalt replacement and concrete replacement. We got a lot of work done. We tested ourselves in terms of being able, I think it's the most money we've spent in one year. And when we talked about the idea that we would, when when we put the ballot measure out in in twenty sixteen, we were talking about spending eighteen million dollars a year, and we got pretty darn close to that last year. And this is a group that has not only spent the money, but also relooked and reexamined the, the work that we're doing in order to get better and more robust data to make better decisions. So we wanted to bring this before the city council tonight, so that you had a good understanding of how we're expending thirteen million dollars or so of resources each and every construction season. That's annually appropriated.
Very good. Well, thank you. I heard some real expertise in the answers, so I think we got the right people in the right seats on the bus.
Mr. Mayor, I I have a quick question, actually, for City Manager Devon, kind of along the lines of the, of the statement he just made, if you don't mind. So, Mr. Devon, the question I have is, is I see this in our packet that that we had some years of underspend on our budgeted street maintenance dollars. I'm thinking about twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen, that it was, you know, five or six million dollars underspent, and and last year, we spent up to thirteen to 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 do some catching up there. And I I know we engaged in this whole conversation some years ago, based on a PCI report and some kind of reporting about how much annually we should be spending to to bring our streets to a certain level. Now that we've had five or six years of of, sounds like some innovative ways of doing this, as well as some increased spending now, have we gone back and revisited that, that proposed budget that it would take for us to achieve a certain level of of performance on our streets? Do we have more good numbers on that? And, and do we have any kind of a plans to to get to that number, whatever that number might be?
So, that's a great question, John. I would, I'm going to invite either Don Dent or Don Wick or Dan Pumphrey to see if they want to weigh in before I offer a response.
Sure, be happy to weigh in on that. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Marriott. It is a good one. And we're doing a couple of things around that. One is, is that one of the reasons that we made the change to the new software tool is to really be able to provide us with the kind of information that we need in order to make those decisions. And it will also give us the opportunity to do more precise projection, which then leads to how we're spending that money, changing the PCI index, and whether an increase or not of our annual funding and how, and how that changes and how it makes a difference. So it is something that we are definitely interested in looking at to see what the effect is by using these better tools. And it's an answer that we should be able to provide you coming up in the future. Dan, do you want to add anything additional to that?
Yes, I, I think it's worth noting that we just, this past fall, did a complete study, as Keith shared with everybody, and we brought in a lot of different testing. And one thing that I think would be a good factoid to share would be that we're looking at, after this year, we get everything implemented to put, instead of every three years doing an analysis and and trying to, you know, bridge that gap when we do, we're looking at doing a third of the city every year, so that we can continue to have real data coming in all the time to assist us in with our new software in that decision making and basically provide us with more real-time information.
Okay, let me follow up with just one last question, then two, and that's, I see we spent somewhere around thirteen million this year on our streets program. Is that about the capacity we currently have to do? And and is the, since I know we do lots of this with contracts, that it's not all self-performed work. In fact, I believe not a lot of it is. What's the capacity for the, for the, the private sector to absorb money? Are we within about ten percent of what we could possibly do, even if we had unlimited money, or or where are we at there?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna invite Don to ask the question, because after Don, after Don got through spending the thirteen million dollars, he asked Lori and I for more money. So, Don, you want to talk a little bit more about that?
Yes, we do have capacity to be able to handle more of that. And if we were to increase our annual spending with the team that we have here in place, we could, we could manage additional spending and additional contractors to work on our annual pavement program, which of course moves the needle farther down the road. So I believe, Keith, you did some calculation on what we could handle. Do you want to speak a little bit more to that?
Yeah, so we, we feel comfortable with, with what we've done this past year in, what we think we would be able to spend. And we think, we think conservatively, we we could probably spend another five million dollars a year and still be able to meet within, with our contractors and you know, move forward. The, the issue we would have is, is, really comes down to, to timing. You know, if if you were to come with us, or come to us in, say, June with an additional five million dollars, it's really going to limit us on what we were going to be able to do as far as treatments. A lot of contractors would already be busy. This was something that council decided to put more money towards. Now, we would be just starting, we'd be at the beginning to be able to have those contracts go out and and have those ideas. We'd have a real, we'd be able to really spread it around the city with different treatments and and different ideas. You know, and that, that's one of the advantages we looked at this year is, our asphalt contract went out to bid last year for this year's work. Obviously, the earlier we put this out, the better pricing we're going to get, because contractors are still out looking for work. It's, it's, they're still trying to plan out their following year. So that, that's one of the things we've tried to do is is put things out to bid very early to be able to, to get those, those better pricing. But to answer your question, I think five million dollars increase, we would be able to spend.
And I would add on that, that, you know, if construction starts to soften, prices could soften as well, and we could certainly take advantage of that opportunity.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So now we're going to ask Mr. Archer, do we have an extra five million dollars that's come on that we can spend for this? So I'm sure we'll be getting a report on that, because none of these workshops happen by accident. There's always a reason why our very competent city manager likes to tee it up for us.
Well, we also think it's important to let you guys know how, how we're spending the public's money as well, just in general.
Very good. Okay, does that complete this first workshop?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Mayor, it does, except we're, we're going to go into our traffic engineering workshop, I believe.
That's, that's right. That's part of this.
Yeah, and.
Because you always like to throw two engineering things at us at the same time.
Right. We, we know that two engineering issues is probably the limit for all of you, but we think that this one's pretty important, too. So, Don, do you want to introduce this one as well, sir?
Yes, so we are going to give a, an update for you on the work that we did around traffic and transportation engineering. And I'd like to introduce to you our traffic engineer, Mazdor Hussain. I don't, I don't think councils had a chance yet to meet Mazdor. So I'd like to briefly introduce himself, and then we'll get started on that presentation.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce myself as the new city traffic engineer for the city of Arvada. And I hope all is well at your end. So I'm going to begin my presentation. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to present traffic engineering progress. Again, my name is Mazdor Hussain, the new city traffic engineer. Sylvia Lopo, traffic engineer, and Phil Neal, our traffic field operations supervisor, will also present with me. Before I begin the presentation, I want to provide you a very brief background of myself, just to make sure, just to introduce myself. I completed my master's in traffic engineering in two thousand and five and started my career as a consultant. And later, actually, I worked for the city of Tacoma, Washington, before I moved to the city of Arvada. Next slide, please.
Wrong presentation, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is the one. Yeah. Next slide. Thank you. Appreciate it. Our brief presentation will cover a traffic signal rebuild and maintenance program, ongoing efforts to maintain striping, pavement marking, roadway sign, and the recent initiatives on traffic signal timing, fiber backbone projects, and the plan for two thousand and twenty-one. Next slide, please. Traffic Engineering Division is committed to achieving five key goals. First, safe and efficient transportation system. Second, strategic planning, which will allow us to design an environmentally and physically sustainable transportation system. Third, develop a transportation system that supports the future land use. Fourth, develop programmatic maintenance and operational plan to enhance the aging infrastructure's lifecycle. And at last, establish strategic partnership with neighboring jurisdictions to build a comprehensive transportation system. Next slide, Sylvia Lopo, please.
Thank you, Mazdor. So I'm going to share with council, kind of the work that we have been doing around our traffic signal rebuild and maintenance program. So in twenty twenty, we were able to complete the full rebuild of one of our signals at Hill Petroleum and Rolston Road. And we initiated construction on another signal rebuild that's currently in construction at fifty-eighth Place in Independence. We were also able to do a lot of work on our highway safety improvement projects. We have a total of six of these federally funded grants. The traffic engineering team is responsible for delivering five out of those six. And currently, we are well underway in design and right away at Fifty-Eighth Avenue in Independence and Eighty-Sixth Parkway in Kipling. And then we're also in design and going to be starting the right-of-way acquisition process for the other three locations, so Fifty-Eighth and Kipling, Eightieth Avenue in Vance, and Sixty-Fourth Avenue in Sims. And then also, we have several other projects that are currently in design. We have about half a dozen intersection rebuilds, and some of them include some of our high-profile locations similar to Sixty-Fourth Avenue and McIntyre Parkway, that we get a lot of requests and ask for that is about. And then also some of our older signals, such as Eightieth Avenue and Chase, which was built in the late seventies. Next slide, please. And now I'm going to turn it over to Phil Neal.
Thanks, Sylvia. I'm just going to go briefly over accomplishments of the sign and marking crew. This year, once again, we restrike the entire city, one hundred and twenty-seven lane miles of striping. Also began a crosswalk replacement program, where we have switched from a takedown adhesive material to a thermoplastic burn-down material. A little more costly upfront, but gives us much more durability and longevity. Also this year in the striping, we restriked and signed the entire Old Town Transit Hub, which is a hundred and thirty-plus signs we installed, removed, and reinstalled a couple times as we worked. Then we worked with facilities and transportation on that project. In signing, we began a new program this year with a retroreflectometer. This tool allows us to read the condition of the signs, rather than our previous process, was to just remove signs on a age basis. And what we're finding is, we were moving a heck of a lot of signs that we didn't need to remove. We actually have a sign in my office that's twenty-five years old that still meets the retroreflectometer required. So we feel like this is a, a project is really going to save the city money and just be resourceful with recycling, using these signs. When we find a sign we replace, we now have a contract that we ship these signs back. They're refurbished, cleaned up to bear ownership back to us. So we're, we're recycling, being green that way also. We have a, a huge stock of sign blanks at the shop that have been around for a year, and we've recent, for years, and recently have purchased a machine that we can cut these into usable sizes, rather than ordering and continue to purchase new stuff. So through the sign program, we're, we're doing some, not only some green things, but saving time and money. For the next year, big plans we have coming up, will we be striping the entire city again, and also working with the street department and doing the, the restrike for these overlay streets in-house? Our crews will be doing it. I guess this is where I insert the, thank you for the approval of the new paint truck. The crew wanted me to thank you guys for that. They said they were tired of hanging off the back of the old one, trying to stripe with a roller and a paintbrush. So we appreciate the approval on that. Big project we have coming this year is a signal arm sign replacement. We're replacing all the signs on all the signal mast arms. We're kind of doing this in-house as a joint venture with Parks and Facilities. We're going to use a list that they purchased. So our crews will be changing out the signs. With this, we'll be also utilizing a impact attenuator that the utilities department has for safety in the, in this project. And also tag teaming along with the streets crew and Stan Tech in their Road Matrix program. This year, we are trying to get a contract set with them. Previous reads and drive they've done of the entire city, they're able to also go back and review this and get us an inventory of all of our pavement markings, turn arrows, railroad crossings, just any and all. So we, we were lucky enough to get in under that and and kind of do a joint venture with streets with Stan Tech to collect that information. I think that's in a nutshell right there. Next slide, Mazdor?
Thank you, Phil. City of Arvada is actually the process of developing a traffic signal timing and optimization program. Traffic signal timing and optimization program is a multi-step process. As part of this multi-step process, City of Arvada purchased the Centraks software. It's actually an advanced traffic management system to monitor traffic signal operation in real time. Approximately 40 signals are now connected to the Centraks. And we are also working to actively working to connect other signals to the CD fiber backbone backbone, which will eventually be connected to the central software Centraks. And now I want Sylvia Lopo to provide an update on our ongoing Dr. Cog connectivity projects. Sylvia, please.
Yeah, so as part of the signal timing program, one of the big steps to take is having your signals have communication so that you can monitor real-time data as it's being kind of given. And as part of that, we were awarded back in 2018, a federal grant, COG and CDOT, to connect 14 traffic signals to the new AFON runs along 64th and Rolston, and we're in the process of that project getting started, and it's currently in construction.
Thank you, Sylvia. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Now I want to provide you a very high-level traffic engineering 2021 strategic plan, which includes asset inventory, as Phil mentioned, civil signal rebuild projects, which is a combination of locally or federally funded, I think you heard from Sylvia. Citywide striping and pavement marking projects, that's something you also heard from Phil. Traffic engineering team also teamed with street operation to support their overlay program. In addition to that, we are also going to work on signal re-timing program citywide. And we have developed a strategy step by step to roll out that signal re-timing program. We are also working with other departments to update the traffic engineering standard, which is very important for us to move forward. Next slide, please. Thank you for your commitment and a strong support. We know 2001 will be better than the 2020. We look forward to working together. Now is the question and answer session. If you have any questions, please let us know.
Okay, Mr. Pfeiffer, I thought you might have some comments and questions.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Can we go back through your presentation just a couple of pages? Because there was quite a few questions added. So let's start with the striping. You said you striped the entire city in 2020? Did I understand that correctly, Phil?
Yes, yeah, correct.
And did that include crosswalks?
No, that is just long line striping, just the double yellows, turn pockets, edge of road.
I'm sorry, Phil, but it's been very hard to.
I heard that. It's the first time I heard that I can't be heard. So let me see what I can do here. Is this better?
No.
Yeah, I think, Phil, I can fill that in over here. Council member Fiber, what Phil is trying to say is a long line striping, not the crosswalk or, you know, arrows. And those are the, you know, pavement marking that we will be rolling out quite a bit this year, 2021. So that's one of the data collection effort that Phil mentioned that is undergoing right now also.
So this this year, you're saying you'll get to the crosswalks and the arrows and the other things that are not long.
Yes, yes.
And then going to the hub, you restriked that entire hub. When did that hub come online? I thought it was just recently, and I'm surprised we're already striping the hub so soon.
Yeah, Phil, you would like to fill that in for how, please?
I will try to. Hopefully you can hear me. It's amazing how, I don't know what what paint was used in there, what. I don't know, it did wear off relatively fast and kind of strange with the limited traffic and, you know, it's not out in the weather or anything. So it did seem to wear pretty fast. Hopefully with our stripe job, we won't have to do it every year.
So is that a, and this might be for somebody else, but isn't that warranty work? I mean, that's silly that we're doing striping in signs. You said you replaced signs in the hub.
Well, the signs was related to starting to charge for parking, where RTV parking was, where city parking was. So that was that was the first part. The second part was when it came to people having to register their vehicles.
Okay. What was the sign before this one? Or what's the page before this one? Can we go back one? Well, the first thing that popped in my head is we're not going to have any delays with Dr. Cog on any of this funding, right? This is usually the ones that get us.
No, we're looking really good with Dr. Cog. They've been very understanding and they're very excited to actually get this one off the ground.
Okay, and then going to your Centraks system, is that something that you just purchased this year or last year?
Yes.
Doesn't that, okay, so who watches that system? Is that something that we do internally? Because WL, I thought, was always hired to do some of the stuff.
Actually, we will be in the process of hiring a new traffic operation engineer in few weeks, in coming weeks. And we will be able to assign that, assign the software to that particular candidate that will be hired. That is our plan right now, but in the meantime, I think we also teamed with WL that they have the access to their software and would be able to help us if we need to.
Yeah, is this a shift? I mean, it's operational. I mean, it's not something we normally get into. But I'm just curious if this is a shift from, you know, contracting it out and bringing it in-house with additional headcount.
Yeah, I think it's actually, we haven't decided yet to go and use their force for operation, but they just have the access at this point. But we are looking for, this is the operation, something we would not be able to rely on on a continuous basis on it for a consultant. We need to have in-house actually resources to do that because that is going to be much more beneficial for to maintain it and get the best out of it, actually.
And so this is this is probably, since this is my day job now, we're getting to, one, what is the roadmap of what you plan to do in the traffic engineering world? In other words, there is a lot of technology out on the roads now that do some either automation or improve traffic flows and so forth. So I didn't see anything that really discussed, like what is our end game? What are we addressing as traffic? Because and here's why I'm asking the question, we can make COVID aside, we can make the roads as smooth and nice and pretty as they just explained to us. But if everyone's sitting still, it doesn't do anything for our citizens. So operationally, I'd like to know, is there a roadmap of where you want to go and what the end game is from a traffic perspective?
Yes, we definitely have an end game. That's why I mentioned in my slide that it's a multi-step process. One of the things for, before we get into the signal re-timing, I think we need to understand the existing operational status. So definitely the first things we need to do as you are in the traffic engineering field, we need to develop a synco model to understand the existing traffic operational status. So basically, we need to know what is the timing out there, how the timing is functioning, and what is the level of service with those timing? Because a level of service clearly directly relate with the signal timing. Based on that, then we can come back, we can actually develop and optimize signal timing, and then we can implement. And at that time, I think that Centraks is going to be very efficient to monitor those signals remotely and make some adjustment as we need. So that's why there's going to be a multi-step process that we already planned. And as soon as we get the appropriate resource in-house, we should be able to roll out that plan.
Okay, I personally, I'd just be careful just thinking on the fact that re-timing solves everything, so that's not quite true. And I just don't want us to waste money on something that won't get its bang for its buck. And but you're the expert, so I'll let you, I'll let you be and let you do your thing. I just, I want, you know, this is an area where we have limited transportation funds. And I want to make sure we're being strategic in where we place our money in regards to both pavement, striping, signals, you know, curb and gutter. ADA compliance would be nice on a lot of things. And, you know, there's still a lot of things to do, so I just want to make sure we're just, you know, strategically placing our money where we get the biggest bang for our buck.
I completely, I completely and 100% agree with that, that we need to be very strategic that where our efforts should put on and how we spend our money. I completely agree. And re-timing is not going to resolve all the operational issues down there. And I don't, I think also the challenge is that re-timing, we would not be able to re-tim if the, you know, the infrastructure just does not support us because it's completely related with the infrastructure. So that's why, you know, the main, the first step is to develop an operational model, which is very, you know, not that time-consuming, but it's actually provides a lot of insight where exactly the operational issue is at this time based on some modeling. And that will help us to find out which corridor or which intersections needs actually more attention than anything else, exactly the way you have seen some presentation from the pavement structure. So we will be going through that process in coming months to get ourselves up to speed, to understand the issues, what's out there, and come up with a strategic step one by one before we go and implement. I think some of the step has been done in the city in a very, I would say, I think we as a city is very fortunate. Lot of cities, actually, a lot of bigger cities does not have the options for fiber optics that we, fiber backbone that we have. So I think we should be, we should, we should be able to develop our strategic plan as we are working, and we should be able to roll out plan in step by step, where, when, and where we should put our money.
Yeah, you can start with the Condellis and Indiana lights if you want to do some re-timing. I'm surprised Mark Devon hasn't complained about it. So they're always off, completely off. So.
Yes.
No, good, good stuff, and welcome to the city of Arvada. I'm looking forward to good things.
No, thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you for the opportunity.
Ms. Miller.
Hey, Your Honor. Mr. Hussein, I just wanted to say welcome to the A-Team. We are excited that you're here, and thank you for this presentation this evening. Great job.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm looking forward.
Hey, any other comments from council members? Only once, twice, three times? Mr. Devon, you may move us on.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's my pleasure to introduce the Deputy Director of Vibrant Community and Neighborhoods, Anessa James. He's going to lead us through a discussion and an update on the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail.
Thank you, Mr. Devon. Could whoever's driving, please turn on my camera. I don't think I'm allowed to do it myself and cue up the first slides. Thank you. So it's a pleasure to be with you here tonight, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. We are here to talk with you about the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail Project, or the RMG. This project is a partnership between the city of Arvada, Jefferson County, Boulder County, and the cities of Boulder and Westminster. And so tonight, we have a brief presentation. Oh, here we go.
We don't have your camera yet, though.
Can you see me now? Hi.
There you are. Great to see your smiling face.
Oh, it's nice to see you too, Mayor. Here we go. Perfect. Just stop right there with the slides. I appreciate it. So we have a brief presentation tonight. Our Parks and Urban Design Manager, Emily Sexton, will be joining me and presenting. And we will also be sharing a series of technical slides that our partner and expert Jason Andrews from Engineering Analytics will be speaking to tonight. Finally, we have a number of project partners here with us on the call who will be available to answer questions immediately following our presentation. And I'll run through this list of names again at the end, but we have Andrew Valdez at the meeting tonight. He is a Jeffco Open Space Planner. Hillary Merritt is with us. She's the Deputy Director of Jefferson County Open Space. David Lucas is on the call tonight. He's with Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge. He's the manager there and with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Robert Beerly is here with us tonight as well from CDPHG. And I believe that's the list of all of us. So to get us started, I'm going to provide some brief history to set the stage for our discussion. Next slide, please. So the RMG project has a long history. The project is part of the America's Great Outdoors Initiative, which was created in 2012. The regional vision here is to connect the three front-range national wildlife refuges, so Rocky Mountain Arsenal, Two Ponds, and Rocky Flats, to the Rocky Mountain National Park through a multi-use regional trail system. So the segment of the trail that links Two Ponds to Rocky Flats intersects Arvada or transects Arvada. The eight-and-a-half-mile trail segment was constructed back in 2016. And we dedicated that trail on June 4, 2016, as part of National Trails Day. Additionally, the city of Arvada applied for a Jefferson County Open Space Grant in January of 2021 for funding to construct a trailhead at Stanley Lake Library. And so our team brought the grant application to you on January 11 of this year, and we heard your support for that project at that time. So if constructed, the project in the trailhead at Stanley Lake Library will be the first trailhead to provide Arvada residents with access to the Rocky Mountain Greenway Trail. Next slide, please. So at Arvada, we've historically placed great value on planning and developing our regional trails. So this focus is articulated really clearly in our Parks, Trails, and Open Space Master Plan, which is to connect our park, open space, and trail system with green spines in a regionally focused way. So the RMG Trail is really a key piece in realizing this vision in our plan. The development of the RMG Trail contributes directly to Arvada City Council's strategic results of completing strategic investments and initiatives to ensure that our parks, trails, open space, and amenities are in alignment with our diverse, changing, and growing community. So back in 2016, the partners that I previously mentioned, in addition to the city of Broomfield, applied for a Federal Lands Access Program Grant, or a FLAPP Grant. And this grant was was meant to construct two trail crossings, so one at Indiana Street and another at Colorado Highway 128. So the FLAPP Grant is exceptional in that it provides up to 83% of the funding necessary to complete these two critical crossings of the RMG Trail. And it really represents an opportunity to leverage our regional resources to advance Arvada's goals. So as a team, we were awarded the FLAPP Grant, and together, the partners developed an IGA. And so as part of that IGA, all FLAPP Grant partners committed to a cost-sharing agreement to complete soil testing at the two crossing locations. So we are here tonight as a team to present the results of that soil testing study and to get your direction, council, regarding whether or not to move ahead with the second IGA to begin construction on these trail crossings. So I'm going to stop there and turn the floor over to Emily Sexton, and she's going to lead us through the next phase of the presentation tonight.
Next slide, please. Hi, I'm Emily Sexton, Parks and Urban Design Manager. So the first thing I wanted to talk about is how this project provides community value to Arvada. You know, these crossings are a natural gateway to the Rocky Mountains from Arvada to provide trail mobility and exploration opportunities to our community and visitors, which, as Anessa mentioned, otherwise doesn't exist today. This also aligns with our 2016 Parks, Trails, and Open Space Master Plan, as you see here under the goal bullet points. Anessa also mentioned, you know, it aligns with one of our city council's strategic results, which is in 2021 or by 20, I'm sorry, 12, 2022, to have projects like these completed to ensure that our parks, trails, open space, and amenities are in alignment with our diverse, changing, and growing community. And then this project clearly has a need in the community based on some of the trail use data that was captured by our project partners. So you can see here Westminster, you know, through trail counters tallied 1.2 million visitors in 2020 alone from Refuge to Refuge, meaning from Two Ponds Refuge to Rocky Flats. And then Jefferson County tallied 40,000 refuge visitors of the Rocky Flats Refuge in 2020. And then finally, you know, we're able to rely on our project partners and their resources and funding to accomplish the project, which likely wouldn't happen without this partnership. So that's another big opportunity that we have here. Next slide, please. So I wanted to start with a summary of our public processes. And just to clarify, the initial IGA called for two stages within the IGA related to sampling. This slide shows the first stage, which was to create a public engagement process to get feedback about the sampling analysis plan, and then to create the sampling analysis plan document that outlines the actual sampling process and approach. So this slide breaks down the public process that Jefferson County led us through. You can see here, it was, the public outreach process was about 60 days from basically the summer of 2018. There were two open house forums. The dates are listed here in 2018. The dates are listed here in 2018. Uh, from that forum, there was about 90 people who attended. We received 369 online comments and questions. And of that feedback, about 60% of the feedback was in favor of the project and the remaining comments and questions, uh, were pretty much technical sampling analysis plan comments. Um, and then finally, there's a link here to the project website, which is, still exists. You can, um, look this up if you're interested. Um, that's been active since 2018 that kind of goes into more depth of the public process. Next slide. And overall, overall from public outreach, there's, it, it shows that there's community support for the project. So this next slide shows the summary of results. So the second stage of that IG, the initial IGA that I mentioned was to actually conduct the sampling. Um, so here we have listed a high-level summary of the sampling results. Sampling was taken from 73 locations in and around the refuge. There were two different analytical lab methodologies used. This, the third point here is, is the main point on the slide, but, which is that the samples were without exception lower than historic values or the relevant exposure units to allow trail access through Rocky Flats. Um, and then finally, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment both went through the necessary EPA clearance processes. So, um, next slide. Tonight we have Jason Andrews from Engineering Analytics here uh, to explain the sampling process and results in more detail. Or at least I thought we did.
Oh, Jason, I don't think we can hear you. He's here. Try again.
Jason, if you go to the carrot that is by your mute and unmute, you might have some options there to use your system microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Perfect. Yes, we can.
Appreciate it. Thank you for the help there. And I appreciate the opportunity to present to members of the council this evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem. Want to kind of walk through what we did. If I can get the next slide, please? So we collected samples for this particular project at two locations. I realize the map on the left's a little bit small, but if you look in the upper left-hand corner, you'll see a little blue rectangle and underneath it, it says CO128. Uh, that would be the approximate location of the proposed crossing at the north, um, end of the site. And then if you go down to the lower right-hand corner, you can see another kind of blue rectangle and then a blue triangle shape, we'll call it. That would be the crossing across Indiana Street, the proposed crossing, look, crossing locations. So that's kind of the overall view of where we're, what we're talking about this evening. If I can get the next slide, please? So this is a zoom in, uh, the two locations that we're, will be discussing, uh, for the most part of my presentation here. We collected 25 samples. Um, we'll start with the upper right area. That's the Indiana Street Crossing. That's the triangle and the rectangle on the left side that we saw on the last slide. Each one of those little green dots there is a sample location. Uh, the yellow highlighted area is going to be our location of our highest reading and we'll get into the results in the next slide here. And you can see the same thing on the figure to the lower left, which is this crossing at Colorado 128. What I want to point out here is that the sampling density here was significantly higher than sampling that's been done historically. The sampling density at the Indiana Street Crossing, which is the figure on the right-hand side, was one sample for about every point four of an acre. Past sampling in this area was about one sample for every two acres. So we're significantly higher density of sample collection. If we go down to the sample or to the figure on the lower left, the sampling density there is about one sample for every half acre. In that area, prior sampling was about one sample for every 7.3 acres. Ooh, I got that wrong. Sorry. One sample for about every 14 acres. So a lot higher than, or a lot less sampling than I thought. So we, we, we collected these samples. We used a sampling program called VSP for Visualing Sampling Program that allowed us to develop this randomized sampling grid. If I can get the next, uh, slide, please? So these are the results of the sampling specifically queued into plutonium 238 or 239, 240. And we have a couple of things going on in this slide. On the left-hand column, we have the sampled area. So we have the crossing at Colorado 128, the car, the Indiana Street Crossing. As we work left to right across the graph, it kind of explains a few things to us. So I'm going to skip the first column. It says associates exposure unit. Um, we're going to jump to the next one here. So it says project's samples less than background. So if it has a check mark, it means yes, it was less than background. And then if it doesn't have a check mark, it means it was higher than past background. So the, and then the results that are presented in those specific cells, so the 0.045 and the 19.4 below that, those are our high readings. So if you remember the last slide that we were on, there were some yellow dots, there were two yellow dots. Those are the, those were those, are where the locations of those samples were. Um, you can see that we have a little bit higher reading than 19.4 Indiana Street Crossing. But as we continue to work our way across the grid, this says project sample less than the mean of the past sampling and we have check marks for both. So while it was higher than the background, it's less than the mean. And it's also less, as we continue to work our way to the right, our samples are also less than the maximum historic results that we're, we're collecting in that area. And the most important thing on this slide is they're less than the cleanup standard that was established for free and unrestricted use of this property. So we have no, no sample exceedances that we, in our results. Can we get the next slide, please? So additional sampling was completed. We're not going to get into the details of this, but just as a, a matter of informing you of all the data that we have out there associated with this particular project, is the Broomfield asks, uh, our firm to go out and collect additional samples at the Indiana Street Crossing with depth. So we drilled two borings down to 20 feet, collected additional sampling, um, and lo and behold, concentrations did decrease with depth as anticipated. Uh, next slide, please? We also collected, uh, sampling for the Fish and Wildlife Service on the trail systems within the refuge itself. And you can see on this figure here, the trails that we sampled are in the kind of a purplish magenta color. And then the green text, that's kind of small on this slide. But you can see that's everywhere we collected, collected a sample, uh, soil sample. So 48 locations across six different exposure units. And the exposure units are those orange outlines. Um, and those were used during the cleanup process, uh, to delineate basically what they are, exposure units. Uh, and that's how we compared our historic data. So if we can get the next slide? So this is a discussion of the historic, the exposure units and our sampling, right? So on the left column, you can see those exposure units. So those names correspond to the exposure units in the prior slide. I realize they're a little small, uh, but the important takeaway from this, um, our sampling out there is you can see that while we didn't have necessarily less than background, but as you work to the right, we're less than the Wildlife Refuge Worker Preliminary Remediation Goal, which is pretty low. It's 19.3 pico carries per gram. We're less than the maximum from, than the mean of the RIFS process. We're also, uh, less than the sample mean and we're also less than the historic results. And, um, as indicated in the prior, two prior slides, we are less than the 50 pico carries per gram cleanup standard. So nothing higher than the cleanup standard, um, that we found during our sampling process. If I can get the next slide, please? So our conclusions, um, we did not retain any, obtain any results from the samples collected that indicated a higher risk than during the 2006 Kaiser Hill and the DOE report, which allowed for public access of the project area. Next slide? Thank you. Turn the time back over to the city of Arvada.
Great. You can go to the next slide, please. It's Emily Sexton again. So this last slide, um, I wanted to present the timeline and next steps. You know, our, our project partners are all having these types of study sessions with their governing boards, like we are tonight, with the intent to get approval for a second IGA that allows the design and construction of the project. So you can see here, um, Jefferson County, um, Commission received an IGA approval in December 2020. So they went through their session and then had a, a governing body decision made. Westminster presented their council work session, uh, just last week. We are presenting tonight and then our other project partners, city of Boulder, Boulder County and Westminster will be presenting in the near future. Um, once they present, it will allow, um, the project design, once they present and the IGA is, um, approved, if that is what you decide tonight or not tonight, but in the future. Um, there will be, the, the project will be designed the spring, summer this, uh, of this year and then hopefully construction will start, um, by the end of summer, fall of 2021. Next slide? I think Anessa has the final remarks.
Yeah, thank you, Emily. I appreciate that. So we've come to the end of our slides. Um, we presented the sampling results tonight and we're really here to answer your questions so you can make a decision about whether or not the city of Arvada should move forward uh, with the second IGA to begin construction on these, these trails crossings. Um, so we have a number of panelists here tonight, as I mentioned previously, who are available to answer your questions. So as a reminder, we have Andrew Valdez, uh, Jefferson County Open Space Planner, who's really been wrangling the team on this project. He's a tremendous resource. Um, Hillary Merritt is with us as well. She's the Deputy Director for Jefferson County Open Space and also has a great history on this project to share. David Lucas is here from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Uh, we've also got Robert Beerly from CD-PHE and of course Jason Andrews is here as well. Let's all open up to questions. I'll stop there.
Mr. Pfeiffer, you're first.
Is Broomfield not part of this partner group? I thought you kind of mentioned it at the beginning and then you didn't say anything at the end.
Yes, Broomfield did opt to opt out of the partnership agreement. So they no longer, um, want to contribute to the project.
Okay. So is there any obligations or any financial obligations that they have in this project prior to them opting out?
Yeah, Emily, do you want to touch on that question?
Sure. So, um, they did have an obli, an obligation that they've, they've already paid for some of the sampling or testing, I believe. Um, part of the IGA, we had a, a limit of not to exceed. And so even with them pulling out of the IGA, we still are not over that amount.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Emily. Uh, that's one of the questions I had, ma'am.
Good. Any other questions from council?
I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I have a few questions. Well, I'd like to probably speak to Mr. Lucas.
I am here.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Lucas, are there currently any signs on the refuge identifying the background of the land?
Yes, there are, Councilwoman. There are, uh, well, in 2005, um, we completed a very intense public planning process called the Comprehensive Conservation Plan. Um, it's basically our management plan in that it required, um, that we would have signage at all entrances to the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge. It included your typical, um, entrance, um, language related to rules and regulations, background on wildlife, but also it required, and we do have signs up that speak to the history of, uh, Rocky Flats and the cleanup and also, um, basically, uh, websites and other places where individuals can obtain additional information.
So for the 40,000, uh, visitors that have been on the site in 2020, would you say, uh, that 100% of those visitors are in understanding of what the background of that land is?
Well, I would never, ever say that 100% of anyone who visits our locations reads our signs. I can tell you that as a fact because we have plenty of people that still bring dogs and the signs say, don't bring your dog. Um, but, um, I would say that the vast majority of visitors that I meet and I speak with are residents that, of this area and have complete and thorough understanding of what Rocky Flats, um, was and what it is now.
And the signs that are on the, uh, trail are large enough for people to read if they are on a bicycle, moving quickly, um, easy to see?
I mean, my assumption is, uh, that they would be plenty accessible similar to the refuge regulations and other signs as they enter. So at the main parking lot on the north side of Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge, you have to walk through a fence and you are immediately faced with a kiosk that has signs and then you have to take a right turn, um, to enter. So I would say they have definitely an opportunity to see the sign.
And, um, hi, the area that we're talking about, uh, building in 2021, uh, in the beginning of the fall, let's say, um, are we talking about just those, just the entrance, uh, on Indiana and 128? Are we talking about the entire trail, uh, covering Rocky Flats? The Greenway Trail?
Didn't completely understand that question. I'm sorry. Could you say that more?
Let me, let me ask you again. In terms of the construction that we're looking at, having built in the fall of 2021, are we talking about the entire trail on Rocky Flats or just the, uh, bridge, uh, right there at Indiana and then 128?
Okay, I understand now. I'm sorry. Um, so there's currently about 12 miles of trails open on the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge, um, with three access points, two from the city of Arvada and the, uh, Cantellus neighborhood and one on Highway 28. So that 12 miles of trails is open. This project, what you guys are a partner in is the Federal Lands Access Program. That, that is the grant to construct the bridge and the underpass at those two locations. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, through a similar program, um, is funding those construction of the, the connectors between your bridge and the existing trail system. Does that make sense?
So in other words, what you're saying is, is that the actual trail that people are going to be traveling, they're already constructed. We're just talking about the...
The vast majority are. There's some little connector. There's, I mean, they're not little in, in the grand scheme of things. It's a large place. I mean, a couple of miles of connectors to add into the, to, to access the 12 miles.
Okay. And, um, I had a question. Were, um, were you the one who prepared the information for the summary of public process? Would that be, that I would probably have to ask that question to Jefferson County, but while I have you, um, I am on the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council and I've seen a document stating that the Division of Fish and Wildlife still believes that controlled burning is the best way to handle the excess, uh, material on the land to prevent further fire, right? Further farce, uh, fires, not forest fires, but, um, should those controlled burns continue? Cause I believe they still go on, right? They happen now.
We are not doing controlled burns at the moment.
Okay, so that's a, a potential plan.
Correct.
If that were to be, um, okayed, would those bands, or excuse me, burns, uh, continue while people were recreating? Would they occur at the same time that people are recreating on the land?
That's a great question, Councilwoman. And again, if I could, you and I could probably spend a long time talking about wildfire management. Um, particularly, you know, even after yesterday with three fires in the local metro area in the middle of the city. Um, but, um,
My thoughts.
And a small anecdote is honestly, I believe if we look at the record, all of the largest fires that have occurred at the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge have been in February. Um, and they've been wind-driven fires like we saw, um, yesterday in other locations. But to your ultimate question, um, if the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service decides to do a prescribed burn, there will be a ton of public process and a ton of engagement again. Um, but we do generally close off the areas as necessary, um, to provide visitor safety when we do prescribed burns. Um, I would assume based on Rocky Flats topography and access that the vast majority of the refuge or a sizable portion, say the, the southern half... refuge or a sizable portion, say the southern half, would have to be closed and something like that to ensure that there's no trail users for their safety and just to make sure that, you know, they don't get run over or something by a fire truck.
Okay. And I wanted to ask you a general question because I don't know the answer to this question. We know that two of the national wildlife refuges are former, are currently superfund sites. Is it generally the, is it generally the, the approach for superfund sites to move into the hands of the Division of Fish and Wildlife? Is that the way they're generally changed, if you will?
No, I would say that's not the case. There are many, many, many superfund sites in the nation and in the state of Colorado. We do have somebody from CDPE on the line who can give us, you know, hard facts, but there's many.
Were they used for recreation? Excuse me, I didn't really complete that question.
You know, I really probably couldn't speak to that, but I could tell you kind of from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife perspective. The United States of America has a long history and the military history that began in World War II circa Rocky Mountain Arsenal is where the United States started acquiring large parcels of land for military use. As you know, you guys are in the political network. There was a lot of politics as well. There's many strategic locations and probably many political locations for our military bases across the country. And what just happened to happen is those large chunks of real estate turned out to be pretty important to our biodiversity. I believe the current figure still remains that 53% of the biodiversity of the United States of America is DOD lands. So that's even today. So where the opportunity presented itself as a part of, whether it's base closure or the natural transition of lands or cleanup sites, and many of our military sites have, you know, at least a small to a large component of cleanup. Where that biological importance is there, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service gladly raised its hand to be a part of that. One of my favorite examples where I did some time was on Vieques in Puerto Rico. It's a national wildlife refuge and island on the east of Puerto Rico. And 80% of the nation's green sea turtles nest there every year. And so that's an important aspect of our business. Another very cool one, if you get bored tonight and you want to look something up, look up Wisdom, the Lason albatross. Almost all of the Lason albatrosses left on the planet nest on Midway Atoll National Wildlife Refuge. Midway Atoll, we can all remember from the Battle of Midway, served a major, important military strategic purpose for a long, long time. But these, these, these lands had strategic purposes and were added to the Department of Defense and then have provided, you know, huge biodiversity resources to our country and therefore they've been asked, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has been asked to manage that. So Rocky Flats is another example of that. There are some very unique resources at the Rocky Flats based on its history. At the time, a, a large portion of the Front Range of Colorado was being utilized for other purposes. Rocky Flats had a small industrial component, but it also had several thousand acres that were pretty much not used, basically security buffers. And included in that are the Zerik Tallgrass Prairie, which I believe you've probably heard of at Stewardship Council. I mean, this is one of the more amazing resources that we have left on the Front Range and the vast majority exists still on the Rocky Flats Refuge. Another habitat type, the Tall Upland Shrubland. I think that there are 23 acres left on the planet and it is all on the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge. We also have endangered mice and other things that we manage for, but those natural grasslands are of national importance and are very cool, which I believe is, you know, one of the main reasons that they looked at a natural resource agency to be a partner and ultimately take over. Now ultimately, it was the U.S. Congress that made the decision when they passed the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge Act of 2001 and said, this will be a national wildlife refuge. You know, that's what ultimately made that transition occur. But back to your ultimate question, is it, is it practice for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to take over superfund sites? It is not. It is practice of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to participate in the federal lands transfers of former military lands and other places. And if there's biodiversity and things where it makes sense for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, they've been tasked as that responsible agency. Other, other lands have become national forests, other lands have become national parks, other lands have become, you know, the Bureau of Land Management. And then some have reverted to, to sale, some have reverted to the states, et cetera. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
A very long answer and I'm sorry about that.
No, I appreciate that. That's very helpful. You know, it, it's always a question that I've always had about this is, because I'm certainly well aware of the politicians who were involved in making the decision, but one of the questions I've always had is, has our federal government in one form or another, one department or another, ever surveyed the population of the United States to find out how its population feels about recreating on superfund sites? I mean, yes, they've been cleaned up, but we know, I sit on the Rocky Flats Stewardship Council, I know exactly, well, at least what I'm told is there for sure. Have we ever asked the population that question, how they feel about that? Are you aware of any surveys that have, that the U.S. Government has done to say, hey, we have all this land that we've used in our military charge? How well they've used it is another question. We could certainly discuss over a cup of coffee sometime, but you know, they've made decisions. I'm sure they've made those decisions based on something. I'd like to think it's more based on what people want versus what the politicos want. I hate to say that, I guess I'm one of them, but...
So I mean, to your, to your first question, I'm not aware of a nationwide survey on that question, but I would say that, you know, there are, as good public servants, and I mean, it's been fun for me to kind of, I got to participate in the city of Westminster last week and getting to watch you guys this week. It's been refreshing to actually see government working again. It's been kind of jaded over the last couple of months, as we all know. But it's been refreshing because that, you know, all of us come to these jobs with public service in mind. We heard it from your transportation folks, we hear it from every one of you all. So there are large public processes that have been taking place with these sites, whether it's the cleanup process or whether it's the, the planning process that U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service completed when it came up with its comprehensive plan. I mean, that was many years and ultimately, you know, there were alternatives and there was discussions and there were, those alternatives were weighed and there was input received from local governments and ultimately decisions were made to select an alternative that included the recreational aspect. But I guess kind of where I sit as well in this entire discussion is, I've been working for Fish and Wildlife or in these kind of careers for 27 years. And when I started, the public was the enemy because all they do is tear things up. We would be better if we all just had no public and we took care of wildlife and kept our heads down. But the realization is that 80% of our people, our American people now live in cities and they live in these urban areas. And these kids and these neighborhoods and these people have lost connections with nature. The only way for my business to continue is if people care about nature. And the only way we can get them to care about nature is connecting them in close-to-home locations. These people don't get in, just don't have necessarily resources to take, you know, a week off to go to Yellowstone National Park. And we have to figure out a way to foster these connections. And there's also a huge equity component to our business at this moment in time. Our communities are changing for the better. They are becoming more diverse. If you look at the census data for the last 10 years in the city of Arvada and the city of Westminster, we are changing. We are becoming incredibly more diverse. Is there more work to go? Absolutely. But these urban connections and these close-to-home locations, to me, signify a lot about equity and our ability to get people to open spaces and to get them the ability to connect, whether or not they choose to or not, that's their choice. But they at least need to have the opportunities to see amazing resources, to see elk herds, to see grasslands. I mean, Rocky Flats has native flowers that will blow your mind, 638 species of plants identified on that property. The biodiversity is incredible. So I, I view this whole Rocky Mountain Greenway as an opportunity for our, our generation to at least conserve corridors and conserve spaces in places that are close to home so that these individuals have access at some point as our, as our communities continue to grow. Another long answer, sorry.
Well, but what do you say to people who say, but okay, so that's nice, they're, they're beautiful lands, we can certainly preserve them. Yes, it's great for people to see them, but what about people who say, but these are superfund sites? These are sites that have had a history of pollution, very dangerous pollution that doesn't go away for 24,000 years. Can't we find other areas for people to recreate on? What, why these areas, do you think?
That's another very good question, Councilwoman. But I, I guess I would, I would, too, part of that question, I would say that's a dual responsibility. There's, there may be other areas in the world, but there's not a lot left. And if you look at the 16,000 acres in northeast Denver that is now the Rocky Mountain Arsenal, there's not much left out there. It's not developed. And if you look at what, what is, what is in northwest Jefferson County and Boulder County, there's 94,000 acres of contiguous public lands that have been protected. And I think a lot of those things have to do with the histories of areas and our decisions at the time to conserve these areas. So to your larger question, I would, I respond to people and say that we rely upon the people with the expertise in that. I'm a biologist. My expertise is not in superfund. I am not a superfund manager, but that's why we have close relationships and work with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and we work with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. We work with your Jefferson County Public Health Office. And those individuals, through decades of work and science, have made decisions. And just as a matter of record, the Rocky Flats National Wildlife Refuge is not a current superfund site. It has been delisted from the national priorities list. The superfund site is the Department of Energy retained lands. And there would be a similar story at the Rocky Mountain Arsenal. The lands that are the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge have been delisted from the national priorities list based on the expertise of those agencies.
Okay, that, that's pretty good. I just want to make one comment to Robert from the CDPE. Robert, I want to let you know that one of the reasons why I'm not asking any questions on the test results is because, Robert, I'm still waiting for the answers to my questions from September on the Jefferson Parkway results that were completed in June of 2020. And it is my opinion as a public servant that to have to wait months to get answers to even just a third of my questions, I didn't even go into questions about RESRAD, I didn't even go into questions about CDPE's methodologies for its health studies. All I did was the sampling, only the sampling, and I'm still waiting for answers to my questions. So for me, as a public servant, to now come to another decision when I haven't even gotten answers to my first questions, I struggle with that big time. So if, Robert, you have a, a way of getting your department to move a little bit faster, that would be greatly appreciated and it would give me greater confidence in looking at data because I could certainly look at this data and make some comments too, but I won't because it doesn't matter. I'm still not getting answers to my questions. And, and also I'll just make one other statement and then I'll be done. And for the Jefferson County folks, I'm sure you haven't asked your public what they think about, done a survey in terms of what your people think about recreating at Rocky Flats. I think it's very unfair to present a summary of the public process to say that there were 90 attendees, 360 online questions and comments, 60% of feedback was in favor of the project, 33% of feedback was technical SAP comments. I know for a fact because I went to one of those public processes that there were plenty of people that were not in favor of this project. That is not shown here. I'd also like to point out that a public process is not a random study. You're talking about what, 459 people only? We have no idea who and what those 459 people represent in terms of a population. Were these people who were recreators? Were a third of them politicians who came to see what was happening with the public process? We don't know anything about these people. So I think that it's a very unfair way to present this data and that comes from a researcher who's studied research. I understand research very well and I think that we have to just be a little more clear when we present those types of comments so that they're presented a little more representatively, if that's a word, representative. So that, that's all I'll say for the moment. Thank you very much, Mr. Lucas, for your comments.
Just have a quick question for clarity. With the underpass and probably this is a question for Mr. Lucas, but are the, those underpasses, are they constructed for pedestrian use as well? Pedestrian and wildlife access to the wildlife preserve or is it just for one or the other?
I, I can defer to your folks, but also I will say that the, the underpass is in the Rock Creek Drainage, which is on the north side. When we made the original FLAPP proposal, we also included a wildlife crossing in that project and unfortunately, federal highways said they were unable to fund that component. It wasn't consistent with their transportation grant. So no, this particular underpass is pedestrian oriented. It's tall enough for equestrian. I will add that Boulder County has reached out once again and is trying to work on a wildlife crossing for that intersection in the Rock Creek Drainage. And I will add that there are wildlife crossings still included and man, maybe Councilman Bob can help me, but what's the name of the 93 study? There's a new study for 93 that includes wildlife crossings north of Highway 72 as well.
Okay. Yeah, and that's in my mind I had that it was, that there was wildlife crossings included in that original FLAPP grant that we had applied for, but as you said, that's obviously been amended. So with construction, there won't include any wildlife crossings, at least at this point, and those would have to be funded from a different funding pool.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. That's the only question I have. Thank you very much.
Right.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to tag on to what David Jones was just talking about. If it's not funded, well, the Indiana Crossing, it's not on the highway, right? It's a county road. So I think what we need to do is, I'm, I'm a big fan of wildlife crossing. I mean, most of, most of the hits that happen or accidents that happen on highways is, is usually dealing with wildlife. And so as much of the elk we see and everything that's happening on that property is now that I live and look over this property on a daily basis, I always wonder, you know, how they, it's amazing how they cross Highway 93 and then get further down, maybe because there's only 100 of them crossing and everyone can see them, but you know, it's, it's amazing that they can cross the road without... But, you know, it's, it's amazing that they can cross the road without too much casualties. But maybe the city should consider, you know, some thought of, of how we can address that for that crossing. So it would be nice to just not only be for equestrians and pedestrians, but if it could include something that's more wildlife friendly. And, and it might not be much more, but at, at least we should at least investigate it. I'm sure there's grants and other things we can look into that can come in with GOCO or something else that can maybe help out. But let's not take that off the radar. The other thing is, so Ms. Ford, the only thing is, is on your comments, and I'll, I'll make mine, they might be contrary to yours. But I, I believe that, you know, when the visitor center gets built and put out there and, and we, we, we talk about our past, it's probably the best way to discuss maybe what you may not be a fan of, which is the history of that property. But at the end of the day, I think that if we, you know, communicate and, and reflect on our history, we'll, we'll know that things like that may not be something we do in the future. But what I appreciate is the fact that it's been identified. It is being preserved for wildlife and it's thriving. And, and I have to say with Mr. Lucas, him and I have spoken at the fence many times. They don't read the signs. It doesn't matter how many signs you put up. They're just not. And, and, you know, I wish they would, but the best thing you can do is educate, educate and communicate. And, and when David's not around, I'm usually help educating constituents too, to get their dogs out of there, you know? That's usually the thing. But most of the people, at least in my community, they all know what, what happened there. And in fact, they love where they live and they love the fact that there's some reclamation of the property. And, and to answer your question about the people at, at these meetings, I don't have any facts, but I can tell you the one that was done for the Candela's community. Most people that were in, you know, not in agreement of what was happening, were not even from Arvada. So it was hard for me to even sit there and take somebody who's against the, 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 what's happening on the property, but don't even live in, maybe even the county, let alone nowhere remotely around it, just came to pick a fight. And, and so that, I, I struggle with trying to defend people that do not live right next to this property or even in the community in which I represent. So, you know, I'm just telling you what I see and what I hear and, and what I believe in. And I think, you know, I helped do the ribbon cutting to this, this event the mayor was gone that day. And I support this a hundred percent. This is something that people use a lot. And it, it's amazing even by Stanley Lake, how many people are using the trail system from the library, even going in that direction. It's amazing, especially with COVID. I think we just talked about traffic. It's really, traffic is now on the trails. It's shifted and we're going to have to invest in that area and open space and open trails and sidewalks and ADA compliance. I'll keep throwing ADA every time I can. But, you know, we need to continue investing in because I, I could tell you where I work, they're talking about fifty percent of the state being remote now, from here on out. Fifty percent of the workers, that's tens of thousands of people now working remote permanently. So I can only imagine what's going to happen at our trails from here on out. It's just going to continue to be, I hate to say abused, because I think they do get abused. But we need to make sure we're giving them the love and the, the attention. We need to make sure that we can support this one forward. So I'll get off my box, but there's my thoughts.
Mr. Pfeiffer, do we know that that visitor center is being built out there?
I don't know if it is. Is it? I don't know. Anyone has an update on that? I don't know what the last was on that.
Is there funding, is there funding for that? Mr. Lucas, do you know?
Sure, I'll, I'll jump in. Yes, the Department of Energy set aside funding for that facility. At present, we are not working on it. Again, those of you who know me know that I, I speak very honestly. And I will tell you that building a trail eighty-three miles from the airport to Rocky Mountain, Rocky Mountain National Park, managing all these refuges, dealing with sequestration and everything else was, and this flap project here was more than I could deal with. So we sort of tabled the discussion on the visitor center at the present, but it is still in the planning phase. We definitely want to increase our communication and outreach on past, present and future because the past of Rocky Flats starts well before all of the us white homesteaders got here. And we need to talk about the history of Rocky Flats itself. We need to talk about the history of the cleanup. And we need to talk about what Rocky Flats is now. So it's definitely going to happen at some point. I don't like to use the term visitor center as much anymore. I feel that they're, they're, they're becoming more small and we're, we have a lot more tools in our hands now to communicate. So I'm hoping that we can lessen our footprint and be a little smaller, still take care of orienting and servicing visitors, but maybe not have twelve thousand square feet that requires plumbing and heating and staffing and all those costs that go along with it.
David, that brings up a good, the other question I know we were dealing with was the Rocky Flats Cold War Museum. I know they were in storage. I don't, they're still a partnership, whatever your information center may be, is there still a relationship with that organization?
There is. You are correct that the, I guess, under the archaeological terms, the artifacts are in storage in Arvada and a storage facility. And we still have a relationship with the Cold War Museum. I still get emails from MRF periodically, so they are definitely still a partner.
As they're still at the table, it's, you know, I know we had some conversations, council did a few years ago, about making sure that they could pay for storage and stuff. But until we can get that up, I think that's still to memorialize the history we have around this.
Bob, the reality of the museum, from what I understand, because I've had a little involvement with them, it's really MRF who's supporting that museum right now. They don't have any more money. They do get money coming in from people. A lot of the former Rocky Flats workers donate towards that. And I think it just barely gets them through, but they really don't have the money. And things have changed, from what I understand, quite a bit from the beginning. You know, they, they spent the money that the DOE gave them really years ago, unfortunately. And there really is no money. And so they are, the reality is they're storing a lot of equipment that, it's my understanding, right, Mr. Lucas, that you're not interested in all the equipment that they're storing? Is that true?
That's, that's a, I hate to say that we're not interested in it. I think it's a fair statement that the, the, the items that they have will have to be evaluated, you know, by people that are, that do that, that kind of work. Again, I'm a biologist. We rely on our contractors that help us with communication on that kind of stuff. But they have some really cool stuff.
They do.
And, you know, it, they are historic items by definition, so they will be preserved in one way or the other. I think you just have to look at them and decide which ones make the most sense to, you know, to tell the history once you talk about a facility. But I think, I mean, to be fair, I think your general assessment is pretty close. They don't, they're, they're bootstraps and just scraping by right now. I do believe, I do know that they have some pretty serious discussions with a larger National Park Service effort to memorialize the, the entire Manhattan Project up and down the West Coast. And based on the significance of Rocky Flats, they are a key player in that story. So I, I think that will be important as, as things move forward. And again, to be brutally honest, I think another one of the challenges at the time was where do you tell this story? There's a lot of locations around this area to tell this story. There's place-based locations like on Rocky Flats. And then there's locations adjacent where workers came from and other stuff. So I think, you know, it's an interesting, it's an interesting history for them to try to work through because they are very focused, as you know, on the plant. And so, but they, but ultimately to Bob's question, they are still around. MRF is definitely the, the big ringleader, but we definitely are still in communication.
I'm going to move on to Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a, have a quick question. And this, maybe this is for David Lucas, but somebody else can jump in. And that's particularly the overpass crossing at Indiana. You know, my view of that is, is either the Jefferson Parkway ultimately needs to or will be built there or Indiana will need to be expanded. And it would, it would seem a shame to lose this crossing and redo it. Is there a way that it gets built where it's, you know, either modular or can be added on to or can be built in such a fashion that, that if future improvements happen to Indiana, that the crossing still stays viable and, and isn't lost?
I will defer to Andrew or Vanessa or somebody on the team on that one, if, if that's okay.
Yeah, I know. That's a good, good question. So this is scoped currently as a prefabricated steel bridge. And whatever reconfiguration happens of Indiana Street and the eventual toll facility, that bridge could be moved and repurposed. The abutments would obviously have to be rebuilt. But it is also my understanding that some free facility, because Indiana is currently free, will have to remain if the toll facility is installed. So whatever happens in that area, there will have to be a crossing over Indiana Street.
Okay. Thank you. That's all, that's all I have. I just want to make sure that our contribution to this grant is long-lived and not short-lived. So thank you.
Mr. Devin and I will remember when we, as I recall, we were both invited out to the Rocky Mountain Arsenal for a presentation with Ben Night Horse Campbell when he first presented the Greenway Proposal. A lot of excitement. It's been several, several years ago. I think the purpose of it remains viable and important. Yes, there are questions that need to be answered. Yes, we will need to come together as a council and vote up or down on whether or not to support this next phase. I think it's been a good discussion tonight. For Robert from CDPHE, I think, I, I don't recall if you were the one who was part of that discussion last time. I think you've been thrown under the bus a little bit tonight. And I'll apologize for that, but I think there is some information that Ms. Ford requested that she apparently does not have yet. So if you can talk to your fellow folks at, at CDPHE to get her to the information that was requested and I'll ask our team to, to remember back and, and get together either with Ms. Ford or with their notes as to what was requested. And, and let's do a follow-up, make sure that information is, is shared with the city. But with that, you know, I think this still has huge potential. I think it's a project that's has, you know, it's going to be still for decades and decades to come. And the bottom line for me is the people that don't feel safe there shouldn't go there. And those who do feel safe there can make their own decisions. It's like so many other things that we should leave it up to self-responsibility in some ways. And certainly, you know, if we have information that it's not safe to be there, then, you know, that's a different story. But, but there's been a lot of experts who have indicated that the cleanup level is, is sufficient and that people could actually live on the site. So with that, Mr. Devin, anything else you need from us on this tonight?
I'm, I'm going to interpret the direction for the city councils to proceed with the intergovernmental agreement, which we'll bring back for your consideration.
Very good. Anything else tonight, Mr. Devin?
No.
Okay, very good. We stand adjourned.